Okay.
Are we ready?
Yes, you're broadcasting.
Right, so good evening, everyone. This is the Needham Board of Zoning Appeals. We are being recorded and also broadcast over the Needham Cable Channel, so don't do anything you don't want to go out to the public. I always say at the beginning of these meetings, if we have some technical problem that wipes out the Internet, all matters are continued until the next month's hearing, so we don't have to re-advertise. But so far, for two years, we've managed to get through all these meetings and keep up our connections. So I think the first order of business is to deal with the minutes from the last meeting. Someone have an amendment? If not, will someone make a motion to approve them?
Motion to approve the minutes? On the meeting?
Do you second that, Howard?
I second that motion.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Daphne, it struck me, please put a copy of these minutes in the file for the paddle tennis, because it'll get, it'll get lost.
It's in it.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, so the first matter tonight, case number one is 68 Garden Street. Andrew P. Feldman applicant applied to the Board of Appeals for a special permit under section 6.1.2 and any other applicable section of the bylaw to allow one additional garage space. This request is associated with the construction of a new single-family home with an attached garage. Properties located at 68 Garden Street in the Single Residence B District. And on this, I see we have Mr. Feldman. Welcome.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for hearing my case. Yes, just like the application said, building a new house and wanted to add third bay in the garage. In my application, I have the plans that were submitted to the, to the Building Department. In that case, that area is just closed off with two windows. And what I'm asking is that those windows be removed and a garage door be put in that place. And in the application, there's some pictures that the architect drew out of how it would look. And I can also share my screen if that's easier, so everyone can, can see.
I wanted to do that because not everyone has your materials.
Okay. So let me see if I can do this. Okay. It showed up on my screen, but I don't know if anybody can see that.
You cannot. So hit the, at the bottom of your, you know, the, at the bottom, it hits share screen.
Oh, done. Okay.
There you go.
You can see it now?
Oh, there we go.
Okay. So basically, the, the additional component is the smaller bay to the left. And that's what the architect drew up, how, how it would look.
And is the house fully constructed at this point?
No, only the foundation is in. It's at the very beginning.
All right. I think this is pretty straightforward, but let me notice that, note that the Planning Board had no comment. Building Department had no comment. Police and Fire had no problem. Health Department had no comment. And so is there, are there any questions from the board?
One question. Thank you. Good evening. The house looks nice. One of the questions that we look at under 6.12 is about glare from lights, and I don't see any lights there. Can you tell us a little bit about the lighting around the garage?
We haven't discussed it yet with the architect. So, you know, I'd be curious to know, you know, what the regulations may be about the lighting, so we can be sure to follow, you know, follow the protocol.
The idea is to keep the lighting pointed down and away from the neighbors to prevent the, the glare.
Yeah, totally makes sense. When we get to that point with the lighting, I definitely keep that in mind.
And we'll probably make a condition of a permit that there'll be no glare from your lights that spill over onto neighbors' property.
Okay.
And if I could chime in quickly, John. It looks like there's a jog between the doors, so I think that one of the things that I'm always cognizant of is extra light, so, you know, if, I think, you know, it would be best for your neighbors and glare and whatnot, if you could keep it to three lights is not four. So with that jog, to have two there, especially with the grade change between your house and the house across the street, you're a little bit higher. I, I think you'll be respectful to your neighbors, that's all.
Yes, definitely.
Daphne, is there anyone here from the public who wants to comment on this?
Um. Could you please take the screen off?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Up, share.
All right. All right, so.
While she's looking, I just want to state that I appreciate you came in before the house is built. Many people will build their home, it's all built, and they'll say, well, if you don't give it to me, it's a mudroom. I appreciate allowing the neighbors to participate, and it's, it looks like a nice design, pretty benign.
Oh, thank you.
But there were no hands raised.
All right, someone want to make a motion to approve?
Sure, sure. Move that the applicant's petition, especially for a special permit under section 6.12 of the bylaw to allow an additional one-car garage be allowed in the Single Residence B District, with a caveat that any lighting installed in and around the driveway be pointed down and to minimize glare to the neighbors.
Did you want to address Nick's suggestion that there not be four lights out front, but just simply two on the two-car bay and one on the one-car bay?
I don't feel strongly about it, but if you do, feel free to amend.
I, I, I don't, I don't, personally, my view is, is I don't think we need to get into the details of how many lights, as long as they don't glare onto the neighbor's property.
Given that, I wanted to give the new member some ability to participate, but so anyway, so I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Congratulations.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, case number two is 1330 Highland Avenue, the Emory Grover Building. The Town of Needham Permanent Public Building Committee applicant applied to the Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 1.4.6, 5.1.1.5, 5.1.2, 5.1.3 of the zoning bylaw for the purposes to allow the change, extension, alteration, enlargement, or reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming building and to waive the required number of parking spaces and parking design requirements. The request is associated with the full core and shell renovation of the Emory Grover Building, a national registered historic place built in 1898 to allow its continued use by the Needham School Administration. Properties located at 1330 Highland Avenue in the Apartment 1 District. And I think on this, we have Mr. Heep, who hasn't had a chance to appear before us, but welcome.
Thank you very much. And also with us this evening are Joel Bargman, the architect, and Superintendent Gudicants. Missing, however, is Hank Half, who was also part of the.
I have Hank. This is interesting. I, I have, I promoted him as a panelist, and he should be, he is no longer. Let's see. He was among the attendees. He, he has his own.
There he is.
Okay, so I promoted, so Hank, okay.
You've been promoted.
There he is.
There, yeah.
Thank you. And with your leave, Mr. Chairman, I think we were planning to have Hank kick things off, if that's okay.
Whoever you'd like to speak.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you very much for listening to this presentation. It'll be brief. I think you've gone through the basics of the application. As you know, the building was built in 1898, so that means it's 124 years old. It was constructed about 25 years prior to the first zoning bylaw that was created in the town of Needham. And so there are a few existing non-conformities related to that current bylaw. The building for the last 75 years has been used for the school administration. And once renovated, it will continue to be used as for school administration. And so we, we hope that you will approve the, the minor waivers. And Dan, I don't know if you want to mention anything before we move on to Joel and then to Chris?
No, thanks, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. No, I think I'll, I'll let, I'll let Joel kind of fill in what some of the plans are here.
Hey, thank you. My name is Joel Bargman, architect with Beatrice. This is the obvious picture of the building as it stands today. I will walk you through with the site plan, the major request tonight, which is the existing site has 65 parking spaces to it. Of that 65, there are approximately 10 in the front yard, which, as you can see from this existing conditions photograph, is primarily landscaped. In reviewing the project with various committees, including the Historic Commission, the request was made, supported by Planning Board, to eliminate as much parking as we could in the front yard. We have kept three along the entry driveway, but primarily, the front yard is returned to its historic condition, which was a landscape lawn area with some bushes. The bushes that are shown here replicate what was in some historic photographs, and that was a request from the Planning Board and the Design Review Commission to replicate that front yard planting scheme. The front driveway accesses the rear parking lot, and the reason that happens that way is that the driveway is an easement to the adjacent residential condominium property, so this portion of the driveway has to remain. And as stated, the number of parking spaces was 65. We're reducing it to 62. And as you see in our application, if we do the parking calculation per the zoning ordinance, the bylaws, additional parking is required, which Chris will give you that exact number. The building, as Hank has mentioned, has existed on this site with this number of parking spaces for many, many years. And the parking has worked its way out on this site. And when there is an occasional overflow parking of the site for a conference, how that's mitigated on, on-street parking has been well documented and was presented to the Planning Board. So the zoning bylaw for the existing building would require 84 parking where, that provides 65. So there's already a non-conformance of the existing condition. Because we're making the, the meeting room for the school administration slightly larger, the proposed parking requirement is 89 spaces versus 85. So there's an increased need of approximately five spaces. The issues that are primarily addressed in the design are we're getting rid of the central entry, which is no longer used, which is locked over. And that is becoming an enclosed, the archway is remaining, but it's becoming an enclosed area. There's a planter being installed that was requested by the Design Review Board. The glass is recessed in that opening, so you see the arch reading through again as requested. The main entry is the left portal that is handicapped accessible. The roof element on the top of the building has been designed to be more horizontal. We have taken the requirements from the Design Review Board into consideration on that, as well as I mentioned, the planting. And I'm sorry, there's one last element. This, there was a clock at the center of this. It actually wasn't original to the original design, but it was added on at some point. And the treatment of that clock is to be determined. There are many options were given, and the option the school administration would like to take forward is potentially looking at the students having an opportunity to decide what might go on that central clock face, so that it reads similarly to the oval that's there, but the design of what goes in there could be part of a student exercise, and that's under the tutelage of Ann, the Finance Director for the Administration. The reason the north portico is the entry and not the center of portico is for handicap access, but it's also in order to accommodate a new elevator. There's no elevator in the existing building, so you can't get from one level to the others, should you be disabled without assistance. The building's a split level relative to the street, so when you come in this entry here, you're halfway below the lower level and the main first floor. So the elevator is actually, takes those that are disabled either to the lower level or the main level from the entry to the building, and then the rest of the building is, is fully accessible. So that is the overview. I just wanted to point.
Joel, I think you're frozen. Chris, while we're waiting for Joel to come back, and maybe you should jump in and review the waiver requests.
Certainly, happy to. So just a quick review of the relief that we've applied for from the board. We have asked for, for parking, for waivers of the parking requirements. Specifically, we've asked for a waiver of section 5.1.2, which is the required amount of parking. As Joel noted, based on our calculations, the zoning bylaw would ordinarily require 89 spaces for this combination, the combination of uses in this building, and we proposed 62, which may seem, I think, at first glance to be a large difference, but the, the key, the key point to note there, I think, is that the current use of the Emory Grover Building would require 85 spaces, and the property has functioned perfectly well historically with 65 spaces. So it's been, it is, it is for some time been functioning at a, per actual parking count that is, that is less than what the zoning by, the bylaw would have ordinarily required. In addition to that, we've seen sort of waiver of section 5.1.3J, which is the setback to the parking area. The act, the setback is 10 feet, and in some areas of the site plan, in the rear of the building by Oakland Avenue, the setback is, is four feet rather than 10. We've sought a waiver of section 5.1.3K, which is the amount of landscaping within the parking area. The bylaw requires 10% landscaping in the parking area and that 25% of that be located in the internal part of the parking area. The site plan actually includes 13.4% of landscaped area, which is greater than the, that first requirement, but 8.4% of that is located internally, which is just slightly below the, that second 10% requirement. And finally, we've, we've asked for a waiver of section 5.1.3M, which requires that all parking be located on-site or within 300 feet of the property. We originally requested that waiver out of, based on the idea that some of the parking, in rare cases, might be on, on-street or overflowing into the municipal lot closer to Town Hall. The Planning Board actually took the position that that waiver was not required in their estimation, provided that the ZBA approved the parking reduction, that if that reduction is granted, there's no need to worry about the overflow or grant that waiver.
We, when, when people are using street parking for overflow, we've never thought we needed to waive that section.
So, okay, so that was identified originally as something that was needed, but we're, we, if, if the Building Commissioner, the Planning Board, and this board is content that that's not needed, there's certainly no argument from us. And finally, we've asked for two, a special permit pursuant to section 1.4.6 and 7.5.2 to allow for the reconstruction of a non-conforming structure. This, the Emory Grover Building has three existing non-conformities. One is respect, with respect to the side yard setback of that portico on the south side, which you can see is being circled in the cursor there. That side, that portico is 11.3 feet from the side lot line, where a 15-foot setback is required, but that portico is getting no closer to the side lot line than it already exists. In addition, the bylaw requires a maximum, maximum height of three stories and 40 feet, and the existing building is already four levels and 60 feet. So that, that we've looked for relief there too. But I think as Joel's plans indicate, we are not increasing the height of the building in any, in any meaningful way. So that non-conformity is not being increased either. And certainly, I think on, on all of those three non-conformities, the proposal certainly is not any more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing building. So that's a recap of the actual relief that brings us here tonight. Certainly happy to answer any questions that any of the board members may have.
I have a question. Thank you. Good evening, and appreciate the, the good work of the town, and it's exciting that this building is being renovated. I thought I read in the papers that there's a small increase to some interior space. Can you show us where that is or what that is?
A existing building, as was mentioned, is a split level, so there's, it's a half-level below grade and a half-level above grade from the parking lot and the entry. And so that makes the delivery of books, textbooks, paper, whatever, copy machines, anything else, very difficult. And it would be extremely difficult to get it in the front door into the main elevator. So there's a small addition right here that's to the east of the south portico, and that's a loading addition. It's 240 square feet. The truck can park here, offload, and then there's a materials lift that takes in the paper, textbooks, whatever, from the truck bay height down to the lower level where the receiving and the copy center is for the school administration. So that is the extent of the addition.
Actually, thank you very much. Do we know where that sits on relative to the side yard setback? On the plan that has a measurement?
It, it does not extend over the setback.
The, if I may, Mr. Chair, the, the site plan shows the dimension of 16.3 feet, and the side yard setback requirement is 15. So we are within the side yard setback.
And I, I mean, it's a high meeting. So the other question I had was on the rear to the building, the parking area. Are there any renovations to the parking?
The renovations to the parking include, you know, it's re, being scarified and repaved. It's being rationalized somewhat for the parking spaces to go in. This center island is put in to organize the center portion of the lot. There's an underground stormwater retention and distribution basin under the parking lot. And then there's this dash line. There's two footings and provisions put in so that if the town should ever desire to put a solar canopy in the parking lot, they could put solar collectors over this portion of the parking lot. You, you really couldn't put solar collectors on the existing building, so tho, those are the changes to the parking lot. The distribution of the parking spaces, the handicap spaces are brought more close to the main entry, and then the current trash is in this corner. And we thought it would be good to move it off of Oakland, bring it closer to the building, be nicer from the street perspective, and it's nicer for the janitors to have a closer location for the trash. So those are the changes made to the parking lot. As I mentioned, front parking lots taken off. We're leaving three spaces here, but seven spaces are brought out of this front yard.
Well, that's a nice look to, to beautify the front. So if I have it right, there are 65 spaces today, and when the plan is complete, there'll be 62 and 90 are required?
Uh, well, 89 are required.
Thank you.
And the 89 are for when the conference room is in full operation.
Yes, actually, on, on the, from the day-to-day use, it's used as an admin building, and, and it's, 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 it seems like it's somewhat underutilized. Is that correct? The, when, when on daily basis, how many people are, you know, approximately using the building?
Mr. Chair, this is Dan Gudicants, and again, thanks for the conversation. We have a headcount of 41 people in the School Administration and Operations Building. And so on a daily basis, that's how many cars will potentially show up. That's, that's imperfect. We do, in addition, have, in the morning, some van and bus drivers who stop by to pick up routing information. And then during the course of the day, toward the end of the day in particular, we have cafeteria managers drop off cash receipts to the Emory Grover Building. So there is some in and out throughout the day. And, but the, the parking is, is, you know, clearly sufficient.
Mr. Chair, two, two or three comments. Can someone put a one of the plans or a photo of existing conditions of the rear of the building? I'm trying to review it in materials, and I that's a problem.
That's a rendering of the rear of the building. The, these windows here on the third floor are brick openings. They're framed out to be windows, but they're filled in with bricks at the moment. That used to be the back portion of the stage when the auditorium was on the third floor. So the, the major change is the brick is taken out of the existing openings, and windows are being put in there, and then the existing windows are being restored with new windows that match the historic.
When you, when you are in the front of the building, you sort, I sort of lost what you were talking about, the clock face. What, what is the plan for the clock?
This is.
Mr. Chair, right, that's something that we're still trying to determine with the architect. It certainly could be a project that we engage students in, although it's also possible that could be a window, because there is conference space on the other side of it. But I think we need, we need some more advice and direction from the architect as we figure out what's going to make the most sense for that, for the edifice in the front.
Thank you. So from, from my perspective, it's been on the plans for, for Thank you. So from from my perspective, it's been on the plans for for decades now. It's I've been in the building. It's a wonderful old building. It needs work and I'm really. Impressed with the thoughtfulness and the design. And the work that's gone into and the support of all the different boards and the town. And so I think it's wonderful and it's about time and. Congratulations for such a nice presentation.
All right, let me just review the comments. We have the. Planning Board gave this site plan review and. Fun and we recommend that we approve the requests and if they feel the parking is sufficient. The. See town, the 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 town engineer has no comments. Police and fire have no problems with the proposal. The health department points out that you have to apply for a special demolition permit if you're going to be demolishing things. And I think those are the comments that we have from other town boards. Daphne, do we have any members of the public who?
We have one hand raised. I will be promoting Joe. As a panelist. Joe has been promoted. Joe, please.
Yep, just trying to figure out my own you. Thank you.
And then your name and your address, please.
Sure. Name is Joe Morale. I live at forty eight Oakland Ave. Which is between Kingsbury and May Street, sort of direct visual of the backside of the administration building. Just a couple of questions on the plan to the to the development group as some clarification, as well as a couple of requests. On the back site plan on the parking lot, particularly, you're pushing back the setbacks. The currently, there's a six foot vinyl fence that runs along the back border of the parking lot. Is I didn't see that on the plan. I saw how they are putting in a row of Arbor Vitae along that way. Is that fence remaining or will be replaced as well as the inclusion of the Arbor Vitae?
The planting will be installed and I'm just trying to bring up the plan. There there is a fence along that that line.
Well, I think it's an either or. The Arbor Vitae will, we think, provide a stronger. Green screen, which would be complete year round. If we put the fence in as well, there may not be sufficient room for both.
Yeah, correct. I mean, that that's one of the complaints of, you know, our family as well as my neighbors. Particularly in the early morning hours, when the the dump truck comes or the dumpster truck comes. It is quite loud on to Oakland Ave in the in the shoulder hours of the working day. So those Arbor Vitae are certainly welcomed. If a fence could also be maintained as well, it would certainly help offer that additionally. So that's just a comment on that.
I will say that's one of the reasons we moved the trash receptacle off of Oakland Avenue.
Yes, that's appreciated. Thank you very much. The other question I had was the I'm looking at the plans here that Miss Collins had sent over and the application. And there's various pole lights along Oakland Ave. There's one right at the corner of the E dress in and out and. I believe there's one or two others. Along that back line. It's hard. It's hard to tell with the canopy of the existing trees on the plant. What sort of pole mounted lights are those and how approximately how high are they? And are they, you know, if there's, you know, the typical the ones that are down on like, you know, Chapel Street in Needham Center, or are they more the the, you know, high flyers, if you will?
The lights are. Canopy lights are twenty feet tall and they only light down. There's no light going vertical. And I don't have the photometric plan, but the light cutoff is at the property line. There's no spillage of light.
Okay, yeah, in that same in that same line of. On the back of the the lighting on the back of the building currently, there's extremely bright floodlights on the back of the the Grover Building. That it that is something as it comes into the previous application. Discussion that was had about the 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 direction of what the the lights shine. Is I assume there's lights going on the back of the Grover Building. How will those shine? Because I could tell you right now, the ones on that are on the back of the building now light up our living room pretty well.
The lights that would be there would be basically to light the walkway. Well, this the the parking lot lights that we just discussed. The lights that are on the building would be brought would be taken off on the backside of the building.
So we be replaced with anything now. That's that was kind of my question.
We'll have just take the exit doors will have a light that's required by code, but it won't be the spotlight that's on the building today. Those will be removed and not replaced.
Great. Those are the two comments I had, you know, having lived on Oakland Ave since twenty eleven, so I've seen. All the various Band-Aids that have transpired on the building over the past ten years. It's it's great to see an old historic building being restored and. You know, short of those lighting and landscaping noise buffer questions I had, I look forward to. Having this done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So do we have anyone else who's looking to be heard on this?
There are no hands raised among the attendees at this point.
Okay, is anyone on the board have a further question? And would someone make a motion, please? So, John, you want to make this motion?
Jonathan, please unmute.
I said, Howard, go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you. A move that the applicants request for a special permit. Pursuant to section one point four six, five point one one five, five one two, five one three of the zoning code. For the purpose to allow the change or extension or alteration enlargement. Or reconstruction of the preexisting nonconforming building. And to waive the required number of parking spaces and parking design requirements be approved. I just just so that that is the motion. I don't think it's necessary. I I asked the input of the chairman what to have specific waivers of the parking design. I don't think that's necessary, John. Do you?
Yeah, I I think for the motion, it's fine to just. Wave the requested waivers and when we write up the decision, we can be a little more precise.
Okay.
So, but Mister Tan, can you want to second that motion?
Yeah, the the motion's fine. The waivers will be addressed in the decision and I would second the motion.
At all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Tony Needham.
Frozen.
That's missed. One procedural point, Mister Chair, if we could just do that by roll call vote. That's just one one. One requirement of a remote meeting.
Okay, Mister Tamkin?
Yes.
Mister Goldman?
Yes.
Mister Snyder is yes.
Is Mister Heap satisfied?
Very much. Thank you very much. I apologize.
Good luck.
Congratulations.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like a beautiful improvement.
Absolutely. You hope to commence the work?
The the plans are that we would vacate the existing building in December, move to Hillside. And then there would proceed a period of about seventeen eighteen months or so of construction. So. We'll make sure you get invited to the open house. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, let's move on to case number three, six seventy Highland Avenue, two eighty four Webster Street. And twenty eight Greendale Avenue, Temple Best Shalom and Davenport Holding Properties, Inc. Applicants have applied to the Board of Appeals for a special permit amendment under sections one point four point two. Five point one point one point five, five point one point two, five point one point three. And any other applicable sections of the bylaw to provide relief for the following. A, an extension of the two thousand and fifteen special permit. To expand the parking lot due to the acquisition of the property at two eighty four Webster Street and twenty eight Greendale Avenue. B, a waiver of strict adherence to parking space and parking design requirements. And C, the continuation of preexisting nonconforming buildings and structures and uses thereof. This request is associated with the demolition of the existing home and garage at two eighty four Webster Street. And the construction of a parking lot connected to the existing temple driveway and main parking lot. And for renovations of the house and garage at twenty eight Greendale Avenue. For use as additional classroom space. Properties located at six seventy Highland Avenue in the single residence B district. On this, I believe we have Mister Smart. Welcome.
Thank you very much, members of the board. I'm Attorney Robert Smart. Let me introduce the and I'm representing the temple. Let me. Let me introduce the rest of the team. We have Garrett Coursefall, who's the project engineer from Kelly Engineering. You'll hear from him after you hear from me. David Walsh from Hammer Walsh, he's the landscape architect and you'll hear from him after Garrett. Available to respond to questions, Julian Erdos, the project manager for the temple. David Seabright from BKA Architects, who's the project architect. Ellen Dietrich, the senior director of learning and engagement at the temple. And Scott Thornton from Viness and Associates do parking and traffic analysis. Actually, there he is. Okay, so he's here. So we have two applicants. Temple Best Shalom and Davenport Holding Properties, they're co applicants and they're seeking to amend the two thousand and fifteen special permit. The temple is proposing to add two new lots to its site at six seventy Highland Avenue. These new lots, ten thousand square feet each. Are located at twenty eight Greendale and two eighty four Webster. And these two lots are currently owned by Davenport, which is a Massachusetts nonprofit corporation. Of which the temple is the sole member. It's requested that the three properties be treated as one for zoning purposes. Adjacent lots in common ownership are typically treated as a single lot for zoning purposes. To minimize nonconformities with dimensional requirements. And if and when the board grants the requested relief. And prior to commencement of any work under the proposed amended special permit, Davenport would convey. These two properties to the temple. The addition of those two properties to the temple's existing property will reduce existing nonconformities. Will reduce them as to lot coverage and floor area ratio. So we're proposing to demolish the house and garage at two eighty four Webster Street and construct on that site a parking lot of twenty seven spaces. Which would be connected to the existing temple driveway and its main parking lot. Now, to allow for egress from the new parking area. Four existing spaces will have to be removed from the main temple parking lot. In addition, the temple plans to replace two regular spaces with one handicap space in the temple lot. So the net with the loss of those five existing spaces at the temple's current parking lot, the net gain will be twenty two parking spaces. The temple intends to renovate the interiors of the house and garage at twenty eight Greendale Avenue. Without changing the footprint of those buildings, except to add a handicap ramp to the garage building. It's not expected that any of these changes will increase the number of temple members or preschoolers or religious education students beyond their current levels. In two thousand and fifteen, the 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 board granted special permit and Dover amendment release. Allowing the temple to almost double the size of the existing building. At that time, the temple had eight hundred member families. Preschool enrollment of a hundred and forty eight and religious education enrollment of eighty. And the maximum number of children on site at any one time was a hundred and twenty five. Temple membership and the numbers of children and the number of educational staff have increased since two thousand and fifteen. Now, the temple has a thousand thirty nine member families. The maximum number of children expected on site has increased to a hundred and ninety. And the maximum number of employees involved with the preschool and educational programs has increased to forty. The administrative staff has not increased. Since two thousand and fifteen, the temple's made some changes which have reduced the number of cars parking in the parking lot. Preschool parents are now using a carpool line in the morning, so no parking spaces are needed for the morning drop off. Most of the children attending religious education classes. In the mid afternoon now come by bus and most and the buses stop on Highland Avenue. The children disembark and walk directly into the temple building. In addition, the temple's adopted and implemented a parking specialist's recommendation. To reroute the late afternoon pickup line, reducing the chance of any backup on the neighboring streets. The temple currently uses six seventy Highland for religious services, a religious school and a preschool daycare program. These these uses will not change with the addition of the two properties and the completion of the work. Site plan review is not required as the proposed net increase in parking spaces is twenty two. And with twenty five being the trigger. We are asking, the relief has already been described by the chairman, so I won't go through that again. The the existing temple building and the house at twenty eight Greendale and the garage at twenty eight Greendale. Should be permitted to remain despite the prohibition on multiple nonresidential buildings on one lot under the bylaw. The building commissioner has advised that with the conversion of the house and garage at twenty eight Greendale to educational uses. Those buildings should be treated as accessory structures, which are permitted under the accessory use category. And the temple seeks findings that the lawful preexisting nonconformities at the existing temple lot. Be continued under section one point four point two of the bylaw. Is those nonconformities are either not changing or in fact are being reduced. For example, the lot coverage is being reduced from twenty two point one percent to twenty point eight percent. And floor area ratio is being reduced from point four four to point four one. We're also seeking findings that the lawful preexisting nonconformities at twenty eight Greendale may be continued under section one point four point two. Is those nonconformities are not changing. One is a front yard setback of twenty point eight feet, where twenty five feet is required. And a side yard setback of five point feet, five feet for a garage over fifteen feet in height. Now, the the I went through the I went through the building department file for twenty eight Greendale. What I found in there was that the house was constructed approximately in eighteen ninety four. And its footprint has not changed. The garage. Was built in nineteen, either nineteen ninety two or nineteen ninety three, I forget. But that's well before the town adopted the bylaw, which required, you know, increased setback for for garages that are over fifteen feet in height. In terms of parking and traffic. In terms of parking and traffic, the temple has determined that it needs more space to properly accomplish its religious purposes. The addition of the building, buildings at twenty-eight Greendale will help. The proposed project is not expected to, to increase temple membership and, and number of children. You have, I think, in your, in your packet, a letter from the project manager, Julian Erdos, describing current and proposed usage and staffing. Section five point one point two establishes parking space requirements. And what we're, we're asking for here is a parking waiver of eleven spaces. We're adding a net of twenty-two spaces, which is an improvement to existing conditions. And also in your packet is a parking demand chart which spells out the calculations. So it shows that the projected by-the-book parking demand of a hundred and twenty-one spaces will exceed the one hundred ten space parking capacity by eleven spaces at limited times during the week. The letter of traffic and parking letter provided by Viness and Associates concludes the project is not likely to result in a substantial change in intersection operations, and is expected to improve circulation and parking operations, both onsite and on the streets adjacent to the temple. The, the temple project manager's letter identifies several changes in, in the operations at, at the site, which have reduced the number of cars going into and out of the temple lot. And it also states that the temple hires a police detail or sends out temple personnel during high holy days and an occasional special event. It also points out that closing the curb cut at two eighty-four Webster Street is going to reduce potential congestion near that busy intersection with Highland Avenue. The existing temple lot, parking lot does not fully comply with parking plan and design requirements. But we're not changing that except in a couple of very modest ways. One, to, to, to put in a handicap space in place of two existing spaces. And also to take out some existing parking spaces so that, so that you can, you can have the, the, the cars leave the new parking area at two eighty-four Webster and come back into the temple lot. Right now, the, I, I wanted to address just a couple of other things before I stopped talking. One is with regard to the comments from the town departments, the, the, the building department, the police department, the fire department were all fine with what's being, what's being proposed. The Department of Public Works asked for a parking lot illumination plan and landscape plans and stormwater calculations and a, a, a letter identifying dates by which NPD is requirement, requirements, measures will be completed. I contacted the town engineer, Tom Ryder, and I think you have that correspondence, the email correspondence I had with him in the file, because I had asked that, that the temple be allowed to submit these materials after the decision has been rendered in the case. He had no problem with that approach. In terms of the planning board's comments, they say keep the existing site circulation plan in place, which is essentially what we propose to do, except that we're adding this new parking area at two eighty-four Webster. And they, 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 they mentioned the need for a safe pedestrian link between twenty-eight Greendale and the main temple building. The children that are going to be there, which are basically third grade and up, will be escorted at all times by adults as they cross the parking lot. The planning board also mentioned the possibility of moving administrative functions of the temple into the building, the new buildings. The new buildings at twenty-eight Greendale, that's simply not feasible for a number of reasons. Will, will, will comply with, with the demolition review and demo permit requirements of the building department. That addresses the board of health concerns. And I, I also wanted to, I, I've also seen, you know, a lot of communication in the last several days from neighbors. So I wanted to address the main points there. First of all, they, they talked about the twenty-eight Greendale site and its landscaping. And the short answer there is that we're not proposing to change anything at, at that site, except the internal space, which is going to be used for classrooms. We're not proposing to remove trees at six seventy Highland Avenue, except, except at the intersection of of, of, of the temple lot and the, and the, the exit of, from the two eighty-four Webster Street parking area. The existing trees and shrubs at two eighty-four Webster are going to be replaced with far superior plantings. And we think that the screening will be significantly better than what exists right now. Davenport, use of Davenport Road was raised as an issue. And the temple, like any butter to a private way, has a right to use that way. Currently, part of the temple lot is being used as classroom space for young children. Parents enter the temple property at Webster, drop off the kids, and exit, exit, out, out Davenport, as the north half of the parking area at the temple lot is blocked. So they can't turn around and go back up the Webster Street entrance. The temple expects this to end as soon as the CDC says children under the age of five can be vaccinated. I understand that, that, that the CDC made some sort of an announcement today about children between five and twelve being vaccinated, so hopefully it's not going to be too long before the kids under the age of five can be vaccinated. And once that happens, the temple will resume using Davenport only for very limited purposes, emergency access, high holy days, and other high attended events. One of the, one of the neighbors had concerns about parking on Webster Street and Greendale Avenue during highly attended events. The addition of the new, the twenty-two new parking spaces should help in that regard. There were also some concerns expressed about traffic into and out of twenty-eight Greendale Avenue. Right now, there are two apartments there. The temple is not going to drop off and pick up or have deliveries off, off of Greendale Street, Greendale, I'm sorry, Greendale Avenue into those two buildings. We think it, it should be possible for a couple of staff members to park at twenty-eight Greendale. And occasionally, there could be a repair vehicle that comes in to deal with plumbing or electrical issues or something like that. But we expect that the vehicular use of twenty-eight Greendale is actually going to be less than what occurs with two residences. That's all I have, so let me, let me turn it over now to Garrett.
Great, great, thank you, Bob, and good evening, members of the board. Garrett Coursefall with Kelly Engineering Group, just going to share my screen here. I'm just bringing up the presentation for tonight. So as Bob nicely explained, the temple is in the process of acquiring two parcels that are connected to the site. Just for reference, six seventy Highland Ave, which is the main temple site, is bounded in the green line, kind of referencing. As Bob stated, that was for the board several years ago, about two thousand and fifteen, for this expansion that was permitted, as well as this play area on the north side of the plan here. The temple has acquired two eighty-four Webster Street, approximately a ten thousand square foot lot, has an existing residence and associated dwelling along with curb cut. Actually, onto Greendale, however, the address is two eighty-four Webster Street. And the other building that has been acquired is twenty-eight Greendale, again, about a ten thousand square foot lot with very similar makeup of a lot containing a residence as well as accessory garage structure. The site's main access is from Webster Street in circulation, which the planning board did raise questions of. Today, works in a counterclockwise motion. They entered the site from Webster, continued this way, sort of the striping helps direct traffic flow through here, and you can see there's several painted arrows in the site, which also help to aid traffic flow through here. So it works in a counterclockwise motion and feeds back to the intersection at Webster Street. As I stated, the existing site at two eighty-four Webster Street has a existing dwelling and garage. I do want to note there is an existing stockade fence against the butter, number fourteen Greendale. It's about six foot high white vinyl stockade fence. There is that curb cut that was discussed and associated walkways out onto Greendale slash Webster right away through this section. Moving over to twenty-eight Greendale, there's also, again, an existing dwelling, curb cut, and actually has access curb cut onto Davenport as well, in the garage structure that was referenced earlier. So as Bob explained, the proposal for you tonight is to provide an increase of twenty-two spaces overall on the lot. We would be creating twenty-seven spaces in this section on the parcel on Webster Street. This would require the elimination of approximately four parking spaces in order to make a connection back into the temple lot. This would be, all be accessed from the same curb cut on Webster Street, and it has been set up to maintain similar traffic patterns that exist today. There will be one-way traffic flow through the site, and then right-turn only signs, and do not enter signs, both stop bar. When you come to the main intersection, forcing all of the traffic to continue around in the way it does today through the site. So that'll maintain the existing traffic pattern. I know that was a, a comment raised by the planning board, and we do want to maintain the existing traffic pattern as best as possible with this increase in new parking on the site. As Bob stated, a lot of this new parking has been reviewed with building inspector. It all applies relative to the dimensional regulations. For the new parking spaces, there are several existing non-conformities on the six seventy Highland Ave lot. However, we are not touching that beside the connection to maintain that circulation through the site. Moving over to the twenty-eight Greendale parcel, this is the area that was referenced for the conversion of a handicap space. We, we do this for a couple of reasons. The increase in parking triggers the need for an additional handicap space for the architectural access board, as well as providing handicap access to the new classrooms at this side of the site. There'll only be a small ramp that's installed at the garage for handicap access into the building. This is the emergency curb cut onto Davenport Road, which is a private way over on this side of the site. So we also, as Bob stated, we have reached out to the town engineer, which want to state that all of this stormwater improvements will comply with the state, state regulations, as well as the town meeting regulations, road to water quality recharge, and the NPD permit as locally required by the town. We also will have lighting in place that'll have no spillage off the site. All the lights will be modern LED downward facing, shielded as necessary to ensure no glare or light spillage into any abutting properties. And I just wanted to highlight, you know, a couple of other things. This existing fence will maintain, you know, providing, you know, additional buffering through here. We are going to provide generous landscaping all throughout this corridor, as well as along Webster Street slash Greendale. In the extent of where we control the property, there is an area that the town has control of right of way. And I just wanted to point out, there is also an existing similar white stockade fence along this side of the, of the property line, buffering the Greendale site as well. So with that, I'd just like to turn it over to Nelson, not Nelson, I mean, Dave Walsh is part of to go through the landscaping plan here.
Thank you. This is David Walsh from Hammer Walsh. I'm joined tonight by my co-partner, Nelson Hammer. We were brought on board last week to take a look at the existing site and come up with some solutions to provide screening for the proposed parking area. And as, as the reality is, there's limits to what landscape can do, but when you need to actually screen an area, plant materials really are the, the best selection in, in as, in as much as they contribute to the environment and provide the screening that is required. To the left, we have two, a house, honey locusts. If you've been down to Faneuil Hall at all, they planted those trees back in nineteen seventy-five, but they renovated them, and they're doing, they're doing quite well. They're native, actually, to the savanna of Africa. So they do really well in urban situations. In front of the, the white, white vinyl fence, we have a row of Emerald Green arborvitae. I suspect most folks are familiar with these, with these specimens. They're quite handsome, and they grow quite tall, in fact. Then we, we see a couple of eastern red cedar and dwarf white pine. And then in the corner, we have five giant arborvitae. These are massive evergreens that'll, they'll reach a height of forty feet when they fully mature. We really took a look at screening Greendale. That's really where, where the, the line of sight is, is pronounced. So we did a dense screening of evergreens. We also included a flowering pink perfect cherry to give some seasonal interest in the spring. And obviously, that we have on the medium, we have a October Glory red maple for, for the fall season as well, with additional underground, undergrowth planting, evergreens along that medium, which provide a nice screen when they, when they, when they are fully developed. On the, on the plan itself, we show images of all the, all the plant materials that we specified. Again, this is a good selection for this type of application. We have a listing then of the plant names with the size of the plants going in and whether it will be heightened with that maturity. So we think this is actually an effective way to provide the, the needs to screen the parking lot. Anything to add, Nelson?
No, you've said what had to be said.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question about this landscape plan? Has this been submitted? It sounds like you folks were engaged this recently. It looks very nice, and this is part of the application? It's been submitted?
That's correct. This is colored version. It's new for tonight, but it was a black and white copy that was submitted by Bob Smart.
If, if I could respond on that, Howard?
Sure.
Can, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, the, there, this is the second iteration of this, of this plan. As I understand it, the, 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 the first iteration was on, on May thirteenth, and that was shared basically as soon as we had it with, by Julian Erdos with the neighbors. And a couple of the neighbors wanted more, more detail. You know, the, the notes that you see, the plant list with, you know, their, their installed size and mature size, that information, they asked for, for more of that information. And so the plan was revised on the seventeenth of May, and that was also circulated by Julian. You know, I think either the, I, I, I think it was actually the same, the same day. So I, you know, the neighbors have only had these landscape plans for a fairly short period of time, but we think they're, we think, think they're comprehensive, and it'll actually be a terrific, terrific improvement. There's sustainable plantings, and we think it'll do a good job with screening.
So Bob, this plan, it does look very nice. It's in color, which is great detail. This plan is submitted. Is there a date to the plan, just to confirm for our records?
The, the, May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Excellent. Thank you.
That supersedes the the initial one that we found, the the first one we filed, which was May thirteenth.
Thanks, Bob.
Mr. Smart, anymore speakers or?
No, that's it. We're we're prepared to answer questions.
Okay, let me let me deal with some technical issues I probably should have before we started. The board for voting tonight will be Mr. Legris, Mr. Goldman and myself. And as a matter of disclosure, Mr. Goldman and Mr. Friedenberg are both members of the temple. We've consulted with town council and concluded that they have. No ethical conflict because they have no financial interest in this matter. But we've also complied. With the state regulation by when there might be an appearance of conflict by having both of them file. Notices of their membership in the temple with the selectmen. And so I feel comfortable that we can proceed. With myself, Mr. Legris and Mr. Goldman as the voting numbers. Maybe if I could just, you kind of took away summarizing. The comments, but let me just make sure. That we haven't missed anything from various town departments. You you've seen the letter from the Health Department about demolition permits and pest control during construction.
Yes, and we'll comply with that.
And. You know, unless some of the other boards members have a problem, I have no problem in conditioning our permit. On subsequent compliance. With the requests that have been made by the Department of Public Works. We frequently do that. So let's maybe start by asking if there are any questions from the board members.
I I have one other question. I was a little confused by the applicant being. The temple, which I understand that there's been many decisions, but just as a preface, I think it's an excellent project that the the temple is adding parking. To reduce the parking congestion. And I think that's a positive and I think that the plans and the presentment is very good. But but so Davenport is also an applicant because they own the real estate or will continue to own the real estate. Can you just elaborate on that?
Yes, they they they're they they currently own those two lots. They they acquired them a couple of years ago and title is being held by Davenport. So so they had to be co-applicants for, you know, for this application to go forward. The intent here is to transfer the title. To those two to those two lots from Davenport to the temple. Prior to any construction. So that so that prior prior to construction, you're going to have one lot for one lot for zoning purposes.
Yeah, I wanted to ask about that, Bob. Are you planning on filing a? Eighty-one X plan or something to consolidate the lots?
We're hoping to avoid doing that because. The temple lot is. Is is registered land. The two Davenport lots are recorded land. And I've heard I've heard a lot of horror stories about trying to get through the land court. With a lot consolidation plan. I I don't believe that a lot consolidation plan is actually required by law. What you're going, what you have here is you have a you have a you have a common application. We're going to be deeds transferring the two lots to the temple. So I think they're one. They're they're one for zoning purposes. And you have a plan that shows the three the three lots as one lot. So. I don't I don't see why a lot consolidation plan is actually necessary. Like I said, we're hoping to avoid it.
Well, I guess, assuming you can get into the land court, you can voluntarily de-register now.
Yeah, that's not that's not, yeah.
It's not so easy either, I know.
We'd like to avoid doing it if you don't have to.
I understand, and frankly, I'm not sure whether you have to or not. I mean, if. If, for instance, you were doing anything that straddled the line, I think you would definitely have to. But but you're not doing that here. I I had another question, John, if I can ask her if you want to.
Go ahead, please.
I I have to confess that I I am absolutely. Confused as to what the the census was at the. Daycare in the the religious school during the week back in twenty fifteen. On the one hand, what it is now. And what it might become. And and I guess my. When I go back to the twenty fifteen decision. And and I look at it, you know, we we were assured that. The. There was not going to be a significant increase in 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 membership or. Usage of the daycare or the school. That clearly has changed.
Yes.
And and which is a good thing. I mean, obviously, we're all watching the town get younger. And there are markets. I I don't know, and I just throw out, I don't know whether. Any any of the board members have any issues as to whether. There is the need to to somehow kind of. I'm not saying cap, but but have some rational relationship between the the parking. And and the number of people in the daycare in the. The school, I I think you're never going to accommodate. Parking for the high holidays and for highly attended events, or there's hundreds of cars. You can't do that here. I I would assume on on most occasions. That the increased parking will likely be enough to to handle. Those attending a religious service. And and I understand that the way the the school handles the parking. Excuse me, the drop-off doesn't really require a lot of parking. It it just seems the goalposts keep moving every time.
Well, if I could double click on that, Peter, I think we're kind of going down the same path. Bob, can you help help me understand specifically what twenty-eight Greendale is going to be used for? You mentioned something about third graders plus for most of it, then there was something about. Kids being accommodated or accompanied as they were walking in from the rear parcel. Can you help me understand? The exact use, exact. Future use of twenty-eight Greendale from an academic thing. Is it going to be part of the preschool? It's going to be part of the after school? It's going to be both? Just help me understand that, please.
I I'd like to, if I could, have that question answered by by a couple of people that know a lot more about it than I do. And that would be Ellen and Gillian. Is that acceptable?
The plan is to use it for four religious school classes of about twelve kids each. And they're great enough. So meeting from three to six after school, those six. Monday through Friday. Those kids, those children are currently already enrolled. We have a large social hall. That there that we've put up temporary walls and they are meeting in that social hall, so it just moves them into proper. Classroom space rather than a. A hall space.
And Ellen, is there some, is there some evening use that's intended for twenty-eight Greendale as well?
No.
Okay.
And that's for both of the structures in the property, correct? Both the the. So two per structure or three in one? Is that the?
Two per structure.
Got it.
Upstairs, downstairs.
And there was also discussion about. No park, or I think, Bob, you said that. There might be two staff members who park or a couple of cars that park on the twenty-eight Greendale, but just for clarity, there's there's going to be no pickup or drop off from. The front of Greendale, correct?
That's correct.
And it's clear, just to kind of go back to what Peter was saying, I wasn't here obviously in twenty fifteen, but. So would the temple be willing to say that there'd be no preschool use of the property in twenty-eight Greendale?
There actually can't be preschool use because it's not licensed by the Department of Early Education and Care that building, so there there will not be preschool use.
Okay. Super.
Well. I I guess, Peter, I had kind of in general the same concern you've had. While. It's represented, there's no intention to increase the membership in the temple. I've heard such great things about the school that they're running. I'm sure that that's one of the reasons that the membership has gone from. Eight hundred to a thousand and the better the school gets. The likelihood is is that the temple membership will increase. I I guess. I I don't have any sense of of. One, whether we can. Put a limitation on the membership as a condition of the parking requirement. And and secondly, if we did. What in the world that number would be?
I I don't know the answer legally to that, but it it seems to me that there's there's potentially a Dover amendment issue involved.
There is. You know, on 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 the other hand. You know, when we grant a parking waiver, it's based upon a certain size. And as the size gets bigger and bigger, then the parking is under more and more stress.
Yes, I I I I agree with that, but the we're we're not dealing with. We're not dealing with the number of. Congregants and the number of kids that we had in two thousand fifteen. I I don't think that the temple fully appreciated. How much they they might grow in the future. It's not like they. I I don't know that they ever had some consultant come in and tell them, you know, how much. If any, they were going, they were going to grow, but clearly it's been. It's been very successful and people like the. Like the program, but what we're dealing with now is, you know, a thousand, a thousand thirty-nine. Member families. So what we're proposing to do to help deal with that is to increase the parking on site as much as as possible. That was a big part of the reason, I think, that the temple acquired two eighty-four Webster. So we're dealing with an existing situation and trying to accommodate as best as best we can.
Yeah, and 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 I guess I would also agree if you just look at the numbers, even though you've increased by twenty percent, you're increasing the parking by twenty percent.
And and there've been some, there've been some improvements in the way that the traffic is being handled and the drop off and the kids coming by bus. Which is reducing the demand for parking spaces. You know, unfortunately with COVID, we don't have any sort of real life experience of what it's actually going to be like if if and when we ever get past this. But, you know, the operational. Changes, I think, should 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 actually help.
Why don't we open this up to neighbors and members of the public who want to raise concerns? And then we'll come back and see where we go.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Shifely. I live at fifty-two Greendale Ave. Thank you for hearing my comments. I appreciate it. I submitted a letter. That I hope the board has received and and that the the temple has received. I've lived in the area for since two thousand and nine. On both sides of the temple, actually, so I was. Heavily involved in the two thousand and fifteen. Application to expand the temple. Negotiations back then were a little bit different than they were for this project. The temple involved us much earlier as neighbors for that project. And for this one, I believe the first meeting we had. Was ten days ago, so we're we're, I think, some of the neighbors are feeling like there's been insufficient time for us to work with the temple on this project. You know, we're, I I for one am happy that the temple is thriving and I it's actually. Really great to see the kids playing and, you know, such a great community developing there, but. The parking lot at the proposed parking lot at two eighty-four Webster, I believe, is a strictly prohibited use in a in an SRB. District. And so we have some concerns about that. And if it is to move forward, I would ask, there were five specific conditions that I asked. The board to incorporate in any relief. I I suppose my first request is for more time from the board to work with the temple on things like screening, parking flow. And things of that nature, but if the board were inclined to act on this application today. I have a list of five. Conditions that I would ask that the board incorporate into us any special permit that was granted today. Or, you know, a after this hearing. One specific item of concern for neighbors on Greendale Avenue and one of my neighbors has asked me to raise this. Is use of the Davenport Road exit. From the temple and. I raised this in my letter, I won't repeat myself, but the the temple in two thousand and fifteen represented to the board and to neighbors that this. Exit would not be used for daily use. That has changed. I understand that the temple says that it has changed because of COVID requirements. Leaving aside whether or not they could set up the parking lot in a different way to accommodate. Closing that exit. I think that once you have the additional space, if they were granted the ability to make this parking lot bigger. Then. There is no reason that the temple could not commit. To closing that entrance, which creates a public safety hazard. You know, once they, once they have additional space in their in their parking lot. We've asked the temple to do that, to commit to that, to make that commitment to its neighbors, but it it hasn't, it's so far declined to do that. Of course, it could be used for well-attended events like funerals, high holidays. We have no problem with the occasional event. It's the daily use that really creates the public safety hazard in our neighborhood.
What is the safe, what is the safety hazard?
Well, Davenport Road, the exit from the temple, the driveway to Davenport Road is very narrow. Davenport Road itself is very narrow. And there have been numerous close calls with folks, it's only about a forty-foot distance. Between the exit and Greendale Ave and there have been numerous instances of pedestrians walking there. And the many, the dozens of vehicles coming out of the temple parking lot. In the morning in particular, not stopping there and not being aware of pedestrian traffic there. It's just, it's a, it's an infrastructure that wasn't meant to handle the vehicular volume that's occurring now.
And and is the problem that people are walking up the middle of the street?
No, no, it's on the sidewalks. The people are on the sidewalks.
Okay.
Okay, and you know, in general, in the Heights. We're seeing a lot of pavement and a lot of trees coming down and we're happy that the temple is thriving, but. I for one am opposed to another parking lot go, you know, more pavement. Fewer trees, that's a lot of what the Heights is getting right now. And I I'd like to to see that mitigated and we're asking the board to. To help us place just reasonable restrictions on. On this expansion. Which I think is.
Have you had a chance to look? Have you had a chance to look at the landscaping plan and are there changes you'd want?
I have briefly. We've only had it for, I think, forty-eight hours now, so I have not, I I work full-time. I have not had a chance to walk, you know, in two thousand and fifteen, we walked the land with, I think, Nelson, who's on the call today, a couple of times. And he was able to explain to us what it would look like. And the temple has offered to listen to neighbor concerns, but unfortunately with ten days between the first community meeting. And the ZBA hearing, we just haven't had time to to work that out.
Okay.
Okay, and one thing, one other thing I would highlight is the Davenport Road. Is partially non-paved and children, there are something like fifty children in the neighborhood. Directly below the temple, abutting the temple, that use that path as a children's, it's it's called the woods or the path. And they use it frequently and that is another another safety issue.
I think you said you had five points.
So they're listed in my letter. I I can read them.
Yeah, I I don't know that we, I I don't know when you submitted your letter, but I don't think I have it.
Yeah, I don't have it on it.
Oh, I submitted it to DAP, to Ms. Collins yesterday and I was. Oh, I submitted it to Daph, to Ms. Collins yesterday and I was.
Kinda late, no, but but we don't have it, so why don't you go through your five points?
Okay, that's disappointing. I spent a lot of time on it. Um, okay, the five points are.
Well, uh but please understand she does not work on Thursdays and Fridays. So something you submitted on Thursday, she doesn't process. So so that's the reason we don't have it.
I submitted it on Wednesday. The first requirement. Is that um a requirement that the temple stop using any entrance or exit onto Davenport Road. Or Greendale Avenue for daily and or regular use. And limit usage of such entrances and exits to high holidays and well attended funerals to be fewer than ten events per year. Number two is a requirement that the temple agree with interested neighbors on its final landscaping plan for two eighty four Webster Street. Such plan to include reasonable setbacks and screening to maintain buffers between the proposed parking lot and existing residential uses. Number three is a requirement for the temple to maintain the landscape that is ultimately ordered in good condition. And to replace any diseased or dying plant or tree material with substantially similar healthy material immediately. Number four is a requirement that there be no signage, dumpsters, vehicular pickup or drop off. Or parking at the proposed classrooms at twenty eight Greendale. And number five is a requirement that no trees be removed at the southern end of six seventy Highland Ave. Or twenty eight Greendale Avenue in order to maintain existing setbacks and screening between institutional and residential uses. And that would only be, you know, I again, my first request of the board is that. It give us more time to work with the temple on this application. I think that that's warranted in this in this instance. And and that's sort of how it went the last time the temple sought expansion seven years ago. If however, the board is inclined to make a decision today, those are the conditions I would ask for. Um within the special permit.
Alright, thank you. Do we have other persons who wish to be heard?
Can I just say too, I think all of my neighbors submitted letters late last night, so there's. A lot of public comment that you would be missing if you. Haven't received the letters that were submitted last night. I just wanna. The board to know that. I I know specifically of four or five letters that were sent last night. Maybe six.
So Daphne is, are there other people who wanna be heard?
Daphne, can you hear me?
You're muted.
I'm not on my computer.
We can hear you.
Hi, um Steve Sussman, thirty Davenport Road, been a resident since nineteen eighty eight. So I also submitted a letter before five as Daphne requested. And I assume you didn't get it, I won't. Read the letter, hoping that you will be able to see it at some time pre-decision, but in listening to.
Whoa, whoops. Daphne, you're muted.
I promoted him again, he he ended up bounced back over as an attendee. So he is now, he he is again uh and among our. Sussman was again. We haven't. We have another hand raised of Valerie. I did promote him. But he, I don't see him. I don't see him among the panelists or the attendees. I'm gonna go ahead and promote Valerie. As a panelist.
Hi.
Good evening.
Am I there?
Yes.
Yeah, why don't you identify yourself and where you live?
Hi, I'm Valerie Mayo. I live at fifteen Park Ave around the corner. From uh the temple Greendale and both um facilities. I just wanted to raise a concern and a question about uh something we haven't talked about. And that's the human element and the displacement of people in place of a parking lot, so I wonder what has happened to. The people, the renters, the tenants, I don't know who lives in the one that's going to be, I guess that's the um. Green De- no, the Webster House and the tenants living in the um. In the Greendale House. It's my understanding, I do know for a fact, both of them are single moms with kids. Low income, at least one is low income, or or so we talk about trees and replacing trees and saving trees. Love to know if the temple is working with the people for finding sufficient housing.
Uh if I'd like to, I'd like to actually um turn that over if I could, that the answer to that question to Gillian. Erdos, so I think is working more closely than I. My understanding, however, is that. The tenants, there there were four tenants originally, I don't think they're all still there. They're all ten- are all tenants at Will and were given notice quite some time ago. That it, you know, that it was a matter of time and I believe they're all have been given at least. Sixty days notice, even though only thirty days is required uh as a matter of law. But Gillian perhaps can can talk a little more about about her dealings with the with these with the individual tenants.
Um I don't, um I haven't dealt with him directly, just I do know the specifics and Ellen can. Chime in, um they were told in October last year of our intent with these project, with these homes. And um one tenant has already left twenty eight Greendale, she found um housing. The other one was given um notice. That she would get notice, she was given notice in early March that we would give her at least sixty days. And it's always been our intent that if they were having problems, we would, we would, we're a temple, we're not a landlord. And so if they were having problems, they certainly, no one's come to us. They, one tenant decided when we gave her the notice in March to start looking and found a place and has already, she leaves. We're in May, so she's um leaving in a few days um at the end of this month. And the other tenant obviously has until um had, was given sixty day notice in April. Um and the ones that were in on in two eighty four Webster were always month to month, it was, they were always tenants knowing. What our pro- plans were, so they were always month to month tenants, so. That the the just, I I agree with you, there is a human element, but they are, there's no surprise and they're, the temple has always worked with them directly.
So would it be safe to say that if a person is um a single mom, low income, who can only afford the. Very uh low and generous and kind rent of the previous landlord for eight years that she's been there and. If she struggles to find a place that, we recognize that's not easy, right? I I just wanna put that out there as something that nobody's brought up yet, that at least one tenant that I know of personally. As a neighbor, you know, I I can't say where she, what she needs to do or or whatnot, but I I do know she's lived there eight years, so. Sixty days may seem legally sufficient, but for a mom with two kids, a low income who must find. Low income housing, perhaps there could be some support for her.
Um if she comes to us, I I hope that we can help her. Certainly, that's why we told them last fall and that, I mean, that we didn't, we didn't want anyone to be surprised.
Right, a- again, low, low income housing is hard to find in Needham.
The temple has actually been working with a nonprofit, a local nonprofit for one of the units. And it's being rented to a low income family with a subsidy from the temple. And from the nonprofit to help the the tenant, so the temple has actually been subsidizing. For one of the, one of the renters.
Right, so cause that, that's the point, I think I just want the neighbors, I I think it's just important to be brought up. Is it, you know, sixty days sounds like a lot and and maybe they kinda knew it was coming, but. There are just, that is just, I think the human element is hard, there's probably some people, you know. Eight years is a long time and and it's hard, um and we're.
We agree, and that's why we went to them in October for the conversations.
Right, so I I just hope that there'll be help offered to them. To know if they have a place to go in sixty days. If they've been, if they're e- easy enough, if do people think it's easy enough to secure housing in the price range that a low income person could afford? In Needham. That soon. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead and promote. Panelist. Sussman again.
Welcome back.
I'll try again, sorry about that. So Stephen Sussman and Kathleen Sussman, thirty Davenport Road. Nineteen eighty eighty eight. So we were directly involved with the two fifteen expansion as well at the time. Someone at the temple said, well, this is it for us, this is our growth, this is, we're done, and since that time. Not only as the playground is expanded. Into designated areas, uh undesigned areas on the two fifteen plan. Now we have this plan, so I guess I have a general question and it's hypothetical, so I don't really expect an answer, but. How much is the temp, will the town allow the temple to expand? So say five years down the road, we go from. A thousand thirty nine families to fifteen hundred families. Well, we need more room, we need more parking, so. Any neighboring. Building, house in this situation could be scooped up and turned into another parking lot or another office building. Or more classroom buildings, I just don't understand the scope of how big the complex could be. And I call it a complex because that's what it is now. It dominates the mi- neighborhood as it is. Nothing in my, uh in in our neighborhood was improved with the temple expansion. And I'm, the kids are fine and I don't have a problem, high holy days, we've always been accommodating. In fact, many people park on our road in my driveway. I have many, many friends who are temple members. It just, is there ever a limitation that can be put on the growth of the complex? Because I don't wanna worry every time a house goes on the market that it's gonna be scooped up by the temple and. Made. Accommodates their needs. I understand this hypothetically. I am suggesting this, but it is a concern of mine and I did also write a letter, which apparently nobody got. Written on Wednesday. That was in there with several other things um in terms of landscaping, in terms of uh the. The Davenport Road issue and the path at Davenport Road and. Just the general feel of promises made and we're gonna do this in two fifteen and this is it. And nothing has been really. Promises were not kept, let's put it that way. We have different personnel at the at the temple.
Well, are 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 those promises identified in your letter that you think are not?
Oh yeah, there are some, yeah, I don't wanna take, I don't indulge me too much, but in, from the presentation tonight, I have some other things. Uh the bus drop off on Highland Avenue. When Highland Avenue is finally completed, whatever year that's gonna be in. With the state improvements, will that bus drop off continue? I don't see how that's possible because the purpose of the. Widening of the road was traffic. And to alleviate the traffic uh right and the design is as you're going towards one twenty eight. Highland Ave is a one lane, two lane road, as soon as you hit the intersection at Webster, it will branch out into a four lane road. Where's the bus gonna go? The bus is not gonna be able to park there, it's, it's just not gonna happen. It's not gonna happen. And these are the things that are not spoken about, the uh. We didn't get a number for the increased enrollment of the religious ed class. From two fifteen to two twenty two. I just find it hard to believe that four classrooms. So my vision in being here this long and seeing the temple develop. Is that at twenty eight Greendale, in five years, we're gonna say, well, we're, we have now. Hundred and fifty kids in religious ed, we need more. So we own the property, we're gonna level it and put something else up. I, it's just gonna happen, it's gonna happen. You know, it's just, they're gonna, they're just gonna keep coming back and back to the board, so again. How much is the town allowing the temple to expand? In.
Let me, let me, let me stop, let, let me, let me stop you a moment. It happens to be that the Massachusetts law is. The the law, the Dover amendment, is that the town cannot regu- you know. Cannot apply zoning to stop religious and educational institutions.
I realize that, I I I realize that and I realize it is the law, that's why I say I'm probably barking for no reason at all, but.
Steve, just by way of clarification, we meet with the state and the bus area lane was built for us. That bus is going to stay dropping off people, that that was expanded purposely because we use it. Um not the only purpose, obviously, but they, that bus was considered and that bus drop off is, that's what the way it is. It ta- it alleviates a hundred kids a day being dropped off at one time instead of.
Julian, right now, it's not delineated on the, on Highland Ave at all.
Well, there's no, there's no lines.
True, but I don't see it, I don't see it.
I met the state five or six times in the design process for the bike lane. That they're building there and they are, they are aware that the bus needs to stop and they are making it possible for that to continue. The bus, it's a school bus, so it has a a sign, it can stop traffic and it is safe to stop traffic in that site and the state is aware of the bus. The bus will not change.
The bus will not change, okay, and so my concern about twenty eight and also. Additional properties down the years that we, well, we need this because we're constantly expanding and. With the Dover amendment, we're allowed, we we can get this through, so that is a big concern and like I said. The temple expansion in two fifteen did not bring anything positive that I can think of to the, to the neighborhood. It changes the quality of life in our neighborhood. I have pictures, I have emails with the temple from two fifteen. Probably over a hundred emails, concerns about turn off the lights, pick up the litter, all this stuff. Take care of the garbage dump. We plant dread tea, you know, replant the dead trees and I have them and I can present them from two fifteen, all of them. It just constantly, I get tired of writing them, so I stopped and I must say, Ellen, you've been very responsive to our last ones. But it has taken a while and the light in that one classroom is still on all night. You know, not so bad in the, in the, when the foliage is out, but in the winter, I walk out of my door and I'm looking at. An office park, this back of the temple, it's unsightly and it affects the quality of my life. It affects the, the HVAC on the, on the roof affects it, the noise coming into, constantly into my backyard. I, we live in a busy area, so six o'clock in the morning on Sunday, you would think, yeah, let's have a little quiet. No, I gotta listen to that, that HVAC, that, that. HVAC, thank you. Turning on and off, you know, so this is my concern. You know, it's the quality of life that the expansion brings to the neighborhood. It aligns that. Traffic, trees, all that is, you know, with expansion brings more traffic, brings more litter. It brings more noise, more pollution, light pollution, noise pollution, and emissions from cars.
And the sound of the plows running that much bigger.
Then, so I hope that you, the board will able to see the letters that we wrote. I ran home at four thirty last night because Julian told me I gotta get it in by five. And at, for one minute to five, I got it in with typos and everything, but it got in. And so I, it would be appreciated if that was at least looked at. Thank you.
Are there others? Daphne didn't want to speak.
Mr. Russell Smith, I will promote him as a panelist.
Thank you all for taking our comments. Thank you board for staying late. I know this is a late evening for everybody. So I'll try to be brief and to the point. I want to make two sort of general observations first before diving into a specific concern. Versus, it was some discussion about the Dover Amendment. And I understand it doesn't allow the board to prohibit zoning deviations for religious uses. It does empower you to put reasonable restrictions on those uses. And I think that what the community is asking for is a few reasonable restrictions on certain aspects of this, of this modification of the two thousand and fifteen decision. I would also encourage the board to read the submitted comments by neighbors. I, I've heard from several neighbors that apparently these weren't, didn't make it in in time. I do think that the board should read those. So the neighborhood can be heard fully before coming to decision. The one specific issue I wanted to address was the Davenport path. It was discussed a couple of times. That path, just for, for clarity sake, is, is an unpaved section between Greendale Ave and Satrum Road. Sort of the, they're sometimes called the high neighborhood and the low neighborhood. That path is used by about fifty or so neighborhood children to traverse between those two neighborhoods. They have friends on both sides. They go between houses on both sides. That path is liable to have children on it anytime the children are not in school. In the summer, that's going to be all the time. They have to use that paved portion, that short paved portion uh, that extends from, uh, the, the temple's lot to Greendale Ave in order to access the high neighborhood. And now that section that's paved, as was previously mentioned, is a narrow section. It's because it's a shared driveway for single family homes. It was never developed. It wasn't developed with the intention of being used for, uh, commercial traffic or for, or for institutional traffic on the scale of, of the, the classes and the daycare that the temple is operating. Um, so traffic coming out of there is dense and it can be dense with children on that same road. You know, I, I support anybody in the community and I would ask, make the same ask of the temple to make a commitment on limiting the use of that road. We have heard that the temple has a right of use, as in a butter. Again, there's a safety concern for neighborhood children. So I don't understand why we wouldn't see a a, a commitment on limiting that use for the high holidays and for those big events. Nobody has a problem with that. It's just the daily traffic uh, there that is potentially a risk for those children and for pedestrians in the area. So I just wanted to raise, uh, raise those concerns. Um, I have some other concerns from, uh, from another neighbor who is not able to make it tonight. Who has raised some concerns about the added traffic to Greendale Ave and the intersection. I believe he also has submitted, uh, this in writing, so I would encourage again that to be read before a decision is made.
Believe me, we, we read everything that reaches us, but it's maybe not reasonable to think that, you know, twelve hours before the hearing that you're submitting letters, but we do read them. When will we get them?
I understand, John. Um, we received instructions from Daphne to submit them at the time that we submitted them. So as far as the neighborhood was concerned, we reached out to the, to the ZBA and asked when, when do these need to be submitted? We were given a date and a time and we submitted them by that date and time. And now I don't want to, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, but if, you know, we're, we're given a deadline and we meet that deadline, I think it would be reasonable for them to.
I, I agree with that.
So I, again, and I, I don't, I understand we're all scheduling. We all have other jobs. We've all got other stuff to do. Um, so sometimes those things get mixed up. Um, maybe I just, I would just ask the, the ZBA's indulgence in, in reading those um, and taking a little bit of time to think about those perspectives. I just very briefly, uh, the other concerns by, uh, by a neighbor, um, who is not able to be here today. Um, he's had some concerns about, um, the timing for classes to end. Making sure that TBS has parents to pick up their kids from the park, the parking lot on this, on the side of TBS and not the Greendale Ave where the new classrooms are going to be going. He has concerns about the landscaping and wanting to be able to have a, a final agreement between the neighborhood and, um, and TBS regarding the screening aspects and, and the plant selections. I won't go into his, his concerns further and screening the parking lot up to see is what I'm referring to when I say screening. And that concludes our second hand concerns that I have for you and, and mine as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
There are no more hands raised among that ten. Oh, got a new one. I'll promote Holly Sharp Bornier.
Yes, we, we do have your letter.
Yeah, hers came in not at five o'clock on Wednesday, when I don't work on Thursday.
Can I have a yard? I just want to make sure I'm not on mute. Hi, I'm Holly Sharpenair. Um, thank you for your time. I just wanted to also say I did submit a letter as well. Um, my, I listed a couple of concerns that have already been spoken about, so I won't go into huge detail, but I do have concerns as well about the Davenport exit. Um, I have children in this neighborhood. I live at ninety-four Satrum Road. And I know that my children are young, they're second grade. They run around up that path and into that driveway all the time and the Davenport path is very small. I submitted photos of it for everyone to look at as well. I went up there yesterday morning and took some pictures just so you could get a sense of how tight that space really is. And I'm not saying that children don't need, they need to pay attention to cars, look both ways, but when you see nineteen cars pulling out within a five minute period, that's a lot of traffic for a small, little tight space where children are also racing around having games and fun in the summertime. Um, I did also have a concern related to the landscape plan and there may be something there. I didn't see an irrigation plan to go with it. And I had some concerns with the number of new trees that there would be enough watering to maintain them so that the trees take life. I know Arborvitie Green Giants, they need significant water in that first year to really take to the soil. So I wanted to just.
I mean, me, I, I, I think these people are professional enough. If they spend money planting trees, they're going to do the ordinary things to keep them growing.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you. I just noticed that a lot of commercial and institutional developments, when there are sixteen Arborvitie, you will get one to three that don't take and that can be unsightly. So I just hope that there is a commitment to replacing them if that were to be the case. That's all I wanted to say. Uh, my biggest concern is the Davenport exit right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any one more, Daphne?
Joni Scoffit. I'm gonna go ahead and promote her as a panelist.
Hi, my concern is, is, um, obviously traffic and other things, but I've been jumping from meeting to meeting tonight with, um, the Muzzy and my concern is to find ways for everybody in the Heights to be better neighbors than we're being. And I, I heard things here and I've heard things all, all through about people not doing the most that they can do to make sure that the people who are being affected by what project is going on, um, are being impacted the least amount of impact as possible. Um, when I hear that there is a light on all night or that there's noise that isn't being, um, ameliorated by any means whatsoever, it's very upsetting. When I hear that there, that even though the temple has the cut, the right of cut through, maybe they shouldn't be using it. And, and maybe, you know, it's good for some people, this parking because the cars won't be parking in front of their houses on Webster Street in Greendale. But for other people, it's going to be a tremendous impact. And for the zoning committee or for any other committee in town government, I would just hope that they start making decisions that take in more into consideration the effects that the decisions have on the people who live around these areas. This is, the construction that the temple did years ago had a big impact and I heard complaints about Davenport going back forever, um, since they did their big addition. And now I'm hearing it again. It just seems to me that we say you can't go through there, even though you have the right of way. Just go out the other direction and make sure that that's the way you go out. Or put something up on the roof that, that softens the sound or make sure that the, that the trees that are planted are not just twelve inches high, but are, are tall enough so that they muffle some sound and they block the view. I just hope that the zoning board will take all of this into consideration.
Thank you.
There are no more hands raised among the attendees.
Here, here's, here's what I'm thinking. I think, I think there's a real conflict on the use of Davenport Road. And, um, I, I, I think we should give the neighbors and the temple more time to see if you can come to some understanding to limit the use of Davenport Road. I mean, I'm also unhappy that we didn't get these letters and, you know, I don't know whose fault it was, but the system is not perfect. We're volunteers. Daphne only works three days a week and when stuff comes in at the last minute, we don't get it. It also seems to me that people have not really had very much time to digest the landscape plan. And, um, you know, at least, at least a further meeting on that to explain it would be appropriate. Um, I think I see Mr. Leager is nodding, but I, I don't know how others feel, but that's kind of, I'm, I'm feeling that it would be appropriate to continue this for a month to give you an opportunity to address Davenport Road and maybe a little further discussion about the landscape plan. But I will say one of these concerns is we're going to prohibit the drop off and pickup of people on Greendale Avenue. And I think the, the temple has no intention of doing that anyhow. So, I, I mean, that problem will be solved.
Mr. Chair, I agree.
Other board members? Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I agree a hundred percent. I think the, the temple, who's a phenomenal neighbor for so many, obviously a thousand plus members, just needs to continue to work with these neighbors, especially in light of that landscape plan being so new. Us not reading the letters and like, so I would put a motion to continue or agree with said motion.
And, and I also, uh, agree that, that, that based on what we're hearing from the community, that, that they need more time to digest the landscape plan and share the concern about Davenport. I just would add the illumination plan. I think Mr. Smart talked about it being filed subsequently. I think that we heard Butters share concern about the, the lights, existing lights. So having an illumination plan, I, I think might be helpful. Um, and to perhaps for Mr. Smart to address at the next meeting, uh, concerns about, you know, light, existing light. Uh, this is a, a big expansion and, and, and on one hand, the temple is mitigating with adding more parking, but we're hearing that it, it's, it's, it is having an impact. So I, I, I agree with both, uh, members that this should be continued for, for, until the next hearing date.
Mr. Freenberg, you have any comment?
No, I, I, I absolutely agree. Uh, I mean, I, I, I think, and frankly, I don't know that the temple team has seen any of these letters either. Uh, so I, I, I think that they need to kind of boil down these neighbors' concerns and, and see how many of them can be addressed. So we definitely need to continue.
We did have a very successful process in two thousand and fifteen, in which ultimately pretty much all the neighbors were in agreement with the landscaping plan. But go ahead, Mr. Mr. Eric, I think you wanted to say something. Sorry.
Oh, I was just going to say we, we did receive and read the letters. We carefully read the letters.
All right. So, uh, I think Mr. Leagris has moved that we continue this till our June hearing. You want to second that, Mr. Goldman?
Yes, I do. I second that.
Okay. Um, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
The next meeting, that meeting will be on June, uh, Thursday, June sixteenth.
Anything more, Mr. Smart?
No, I think, um, I, I, I think that's it. We'll certainly, we'll certainly try to, um, schedule something with the neighbors to talk with them about all of these issues and, and see what we can resolve.
I mean, the one that bothers me the most is Davenport Road.
I, I, I understood. Um, we believe it's a temporary issue that's going to be, that's going to be resolved. Uh, I don't think there's a, I, in the short term, I don't think there's a viable alternative in the long term, which I don't think is that far away. Um, I, I think we can, we can limit that, limit the use. But I, I think, uh, I, I think for a short period of time.
Maybe you can come up with some commitment to the neighbors.
Yeah, we'll work, we'll certainly, we'll certainly, uh, talk about that, uh, and try to coordinate it. I believe that, um, uh, you know, Julian, who's kind of in spearheading all of this, is away next week. But we could certainly try to set something up with the neighbors perhaps for the following week.
Okay.
I also think it would be, I also think, Mr. Smart, I think it would be great to hear something from the condominium owners that are in between the two parcels. I don't think we had any representation from them unless there's something in the letters. I, I don't, I, I don't know. I, I mean, they were, they were, they were given in, in hand, uh, uh, they were given, delivered, uh, notice. Um, you know, as, as, as required. So, you know, they did have an opportunity to respond. You know, Julian also had, um, you know, this is back, back in, back in March, um, we went to the, the Anethum Historical Commission to, um, uh, because we had to get, um, relief from the demolition delay by law because the house, um, the house at two eighty-four Webster um, is, uh, is, is considered to be historic house. And we did get that relief, but all the, all of, all the neighbors within three hundred feet of two eighty-four Webster uh, were given notice of that proceeding back in March. So they have had, um, you know, they have had notice for most of the, most of the, most of the people, I think, and perhaps on this, on this call that you've heard from, um, knew back in March uh, that we were, that the temple was proposing to take down those, those, uh, those buildings and create parking. So they, they have had, uh, they have had some notice. I would also point out that letters were delivered to them, uh, you know, this proceeding on May second. Uh, so they have had, uh, they have had a little bit of time. I, you know, I appreciate the fact that, uh, you know, that everybody's busy and, and some letters have come in last minute and, and the board, I think, is, is, is taking, uh, taking note of that and said, we're going to continue. So we have a chance to look and look at all these letters and, and the parties have a chance to talk. So we're planning to do that. Look at all these letters and, and the parties have a chance to talk, so we're planning to do that.
Alright, thank you. So, is there anything else that we need to do tonight? Alright, then I'll consider us adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
John, will you be assigning? Thirteen thirty for riding, thirteen thirty and the garage?
Oh. Right. Howard, do you want to do the garage?
Sure, sure. So can I just ask, so, so I'm, there's one opinion from last month, but which I guess.
Yes, it's yours.
So I have another opinion to do as well, sure.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not very comfortable to not get the opinions done in a month, but.
Well, that's because, that's my, that's my side.
No, no, I'm not playing, I'm not playing. I'm just happy to do this garage waiver.
Okay. Mr. Tamkin's gone, so I guess.
He can be sent an email. He can be sent an email.
No, alright, let me think about it. Either he or I, or he are, either he or I would do Emory Grover. Thank you. Anything else, Daphne?
That's it.
Okay, guys.
Okay, thank you everyone. Good evening.
Alright, take care.
Yes.